The City and Marine City Commission Meeting has called the order on Thursday, February 20, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please give a roll call, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rurig.
Here.
Mayor Van den Bosch.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
Okay, round two, four, for approving the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Kerry's. Round to five for presentations, proclamations, and recognitions. We have 5A, the Pension Plan Investment Policy Statement and Market Linked CDs Presentation by our financial consultant, John Fireick.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I think everyone knows who I am, but for those of you who may not, my name is John Fireick. I'm a financial advisor with Raymond James, and I help with the management of both the pension and the healthcare plan for the city's employees. So there's a few different items we're going to be talking through tonight. I do forgive me for all the paperwork that I provided you before I came up here this evening, but the overarching theme of tonight's talk is going back to some recommended changes to the investment policy statements for both the healthcare plan and the pension plan. They're minor changes. We're going to be focusing on the fixed income component or the bonds that we currently hold, but I think they're important changes because what we're trying to do is increase the resiliency of both of the plans going forward, and I think that's the goal for everyone here. So real quick, we're going to talk through the specific changes to the investment policy statement. We will touch on a new type of investment that we do not currently hold within either plan, that's the market-linked CD. And then last but not least, these changes, I'm going to recommend that we take the city's actuary, Niheart, at their recommendation to adjust how we're amortizing the unfunded liability of the pension plan going forward. So before getting into the nuts and bolts, just wanted to give an overview. We'll talk about the IPS, the investment policy statement, market-linked CDs, and then wrapping up talk about the amortization policy that we currently have. But before we get into the specifics, if everyone could pull out the first handout at the front of the packet, it should say, "The Top Marine City Employees Pension Plan." I thought before we get into too much of the specifics regarding the bonds that we currently hold and what I'm recommending we do with those bonds, it might be helpful just to give an overview of where both plans stand currently. So this report, the Marine City Employees Pension Plan, this was ran as of close of business yesterday. I'm going to direct you to the upper left-hand quadrant that shows the asset allocation on the first page. So close of business yesterday, the pension plan totaled slightly over $6 million, $6,1,634 to be exact. If you were to look at the current asset allocation of the pension, just starting from the top, we have approximately 3% in cash and cash alternatives. That is slightly misleading. To be clear, we do not currently have 3% of the pension plan sitting in cash. Most of what you see there is cash that is held within mutual funds within the pension plan. As of today, I think we have approximately $14,000 in actual cash within the pension plan. The second line item, and this is where we'll be spending most of our time this evening, talking through approximately 29%, as it stood close of business yesterday, to fixed income or bond investments. The balance, if you were to go down one column more, we currently have 56.5% in stocks or equities, and then the remaining balance, that 11.73% under alternative investments, that would be representative of the gold bullion position within the pension plan currently. So just to be clear, the gold position, we've had it at a 10% weighting within the pension plan and the healthcare account for quite some time now. I have absolutely no clue what the price of gold does from here. I don't consider myself to be a gold bug. I have no clue if it goes up, down, or sideways. I'm a big proponent of having a 10% weighting of gold in an investment portfolio, simply from the standpoint of it being used as a potential hedge, and it has served the city well in that capacity. But the changes that we're going to be recommending to the investment policy statement will specifically pertain to the fixed income, which currently makes up about 29% of the plan. The investment policy statement, as it currently stands, that's the lower bound of what we can hold in terms of fixed income. We can go all the way up to 70% in bonds if we wanted to, or all the way down to 30. As you can tell, we're on the lower bound of that threshold currently. And ultimately, the recommendations that I propose to the pension board and the retiree healthcare board would be taking that 28% weighting or 29% weighting down to about 12% in traditional fixed income investments. With the balance, we would be splitting that between market-linked CDs and additional dividend stock purchases. But just to provide an overview of where things stand currently, and we'll kind of get back to the fixed income component in a second, but just as a quick side note, the pension, as of the latest actuarial report that was run in June of 2024, at that time, the pension plan assets totaled slightly over $5.6 million. Total liability of the pension was $7,685,921. That represents the pension being funded at 73.35%. That was as of the latest actuarial. Pension has been doing well. Performance has been good. We currently have a stated return goal of 6% on both pension plan and the healthcare account. If you were to flip to the second page of that first packet here, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this. I know we have a lot to get through, but just to kind of give you a snapshot of performance, direct you to the bottom left-hand quadrant under portfolio performance. You can see the pension plan, as of close of business yesterday, was up a little over 4.6% on the year. Since my involvement with the city accounts, the pension has averaged 8.62% a year, as of close of business yesterday. So pension is in good shape, and we've been making quite a few updates over the past few years. Anyone who's been involved with the pension board knows that. From when I took over, we had over 50% of the pension in bonds and cash instruments, and we've made a lot of strides to try to limit that and to provide a little bit more resiliency to the pension throughout an inflationary environment that we just came through. But the changes that I'm recommending tonight, I think they're important, not so much because of a short-term forecast of what bonds may or may not do in the short term, I have no clue, but the bonds that we currently hold, they're paying about 4.5% in terms of a coupon that we're receiving right now. And I think it's important for me to make that distinction because the stated return goal of the pension plan is 6%. It's a good idea to have diversification, have, you know, different asset classes within the pension plan, but as we've seen throughout 2022, when we have inflation rear its ugly head and interest rates rise, bond prices come down, and that was a negative, that was a detriment to both the pension plan and the healthcare plan over the past couple of years. And the changes I'm going to be talking through tonight, it really comes from a place of trying to provide more stability and more resilience into the future because a common theme with many of our quarterly pension board meetings is that we're having to take profits from the stocks that have been doing well, that we own, and we're doing rebalances to try to refill the more conservative parts of the portfolio. I would view the gold allocation and the fixed income right now as kind of the ballast, if you will, the stocks are the growth engine, and I'll admit, there's been some hesitancy, even on my behalf, in recent years, continuing to recommend the board take profits in stocks and put them into fixed income instruments, which really have not provided the safety that we've been looking for. So that kind of brings me to, you know, the changes that we'll be talking through. With the update in the investment policy statement, as it currently stands today, 30% is that lower threshold that we can go with fixed income. And the changes that we'll be recommending would allow the pension plan to actually reduce our bond exposure to 10% of the overall plan, 11% to be specific. What that would allow us to do again is incorporate these market-linked CDs, which are not tied to interest rates, they're tied to equity index performance, but the real key here is that they provide FDIC insurance. So there's no guarantee we're going to make money on these investments. It's completely dependent on what stock market indices do going forward, but unlike our fixed income, which has the potential to both go up and go down in value, these market-linked CDs, we will either make an investment rate of return or we will get our original principal back when they come due. So just to give you a snapshot of where the pension stands, and then before we get into the specifics of everything, just to provide an overview of where the healthcare account stands right now as well, that should be the second packet that I handed out to everyone this evening. We're currently utilizing the same investment strategy in both accounts, so percentages and funds, they're going to look almost identical. The biggest difference that you'll notice is if you were to flip to Page 2 of the healthcare report, the performance will be different than the pension plan, simply because we previously had a cash position within the healthcare account that we were using to fund monthly benefits for retirees. Since, I believe it was middle of last year, we've actually opened up a second healthcare account for benefit payments, so now the pension and the healthcare account performance will track in line with one another. The healthcare account is a slightly different beast in that it was set up as a pay-as-you-go plan, where the city is basically contributing funds slightly more than what's needed to pay for benefits, as it stands today. So as of the last actuarial report, the healthcare account was funded 15.3%. That was as of June of last year. So again, you know, identical strategies were running in both plans, but from a standpoint of how the city is accessing those funds and how they're funding retiree benefits, the pension, we're taking money out of every quarter. The healthcare account, we're slightly adding to over time. Does anyone have any questions before we get further? Okay. So that brings me to the market-linked CD, the market-linked CD. So if everyone has this one-page flyer, market-linked CD flyer, I know you had previously got this sent out to you, so I don't know if there was any questions on this specific structure, but market-linked CDs, as the name would imply, they are FDIC insured, just like a normal CD you would buy from your bank. They have limits. You can own up to $250,000 per bank, so whether it's a Goldman Sachs market-linked CD or Bank of America or JP Morgan, as long as we had under $250,000 with any one of those banks, they could go under and we will get our principal back at the end of the term. The specific recommendation that I proposed to the pension board was that we use these investments in a laddered structure, where we're buying them at different starting points, and thus we would be able to use the stock market volatility to our advantage over time. Without going into too many of the specifics, they offer these type of investments. We get a brand-new list of them every month from the different banks that Raymond James works with, and they vary in terms of maturities. So there's two-year market-linked CDs you can buy, there's three-year market-linked CDs you can buy. The longest that we would be buying is four and a half years, and the process that we would like to implement is to be putting approximately 2.5% of the plan assets into market-linked CDs each quarter between now and the end of the year. So at the end of the year, we would have a full 10% weighting to market-linked CDs, but we'd be staggering those maturities. Most importantly, we can buy market-linked CDs on different stock market indexes. The CDs that I personally would, you know, be recommending the city consider would not be international stock indexes, so it would be an index like the S&amp;P 500 or the Russell 2000, which represents small-cap stocks here in the U.S., but they're all going to have different terms. In its simplest form, when you buy a CD, it'll have a cap rate over a certain timeframe. So this example on this sheet is a market-linked CD over a period of five years with a cap rate of 30%. You buy the CD, you hold it for five years, they'll take a measurement of whatever the S&amp;P 500 did over that timeframe, and if the S&amp;P 500 is positive, you will get that positive rate of return up to the cap rate. So hypothetically, if the S&amp;P 500 was up 40% over the next five years, we would make 30%, we would be capped out at that cap rate. If the S&amp;P was up five, we would make five. If the S&amp;P was down, we would get our original principal back. One important thing to note, I don't have any concerns with any of the banks that Raymond James works with. We do have a great, you know, due diligence department that's constantly looking at credit ratings and whatnot, but with these specific types of investments, the return on the index is not guaranteed. The principal is guaranteed. So just hypothetically, if Goldman Sachs were to go out of business and we were to own a five-year CD on the S&amp;P 500, we would not be guaranteed that return at the end. All we would be guaranteed is our principal back. So, you know, although I have no concerns about us going over the FDIC limits, I do think it's important for us to have exposure to as many different banks as possible, just to spread out that risk, because obviously, we don't want to have money allocated to an investment that doesn't go anywhere for three or four or five years. But the reason I'm bringing this up, again, it provides that level of stability where we know that we are at least getting our principal back when we put money into this type of investment, and when viewed as a part of the ballast of the portfolio, I personally have way more confidence in us taking profits in an investment like this versus continuing to put, you know, roughly 30% of the pension's assets in fixed income securities, which may do well, may not do well. I personally have my concerns based on the amount of debt that we have as a country, that we may need interest rates to move higher over a longer period of time. I very well could be wrong, but if you were to just take a look at the last four years, whether it be central bank intervention with our Federal Reserve having to create more monetary units and put it into the system, or if we were to kind of take a look at government spending programs, we've had a tough time as bond investors. The bond market has still not recovered from its peak in 2021. Stocks have been doing quite well. Bonds are still down significantly from where they were three or four years ago. So not a prediction on what happens in the short term, however, I do view these market-linked CDs as a superior investment as it pertains to the pension plan and the goals that we're trying to accomplish there. For the healthcare account, same thing would apply. So, you know, again, we're running identical strategies within both accounts right now. This would be a 10% weighting to these market-linked CDs, and really, the intended goal is that fast forward two, three, four years from now, we would have these CDs come and do at different times. There's no guarantee that the stock market's going to be up any given year, but if we have a ladder where we're properly having these mature and then purchasing more of them, it overwhelmingly stacks the odds in our favor to have a positive outcome over a longer period of time. In regards to the amortization process, I will admit, I am not an actuary. If you wanted specifics, you know, probably refer you to Niheart, but I think this is an important item to bring up because the way the city is currently amortizing the unfunded liability of the pension plan is that it's a reducing term every year. So in 2023, the city was amortizing the unfunded liability, how much they need to contribute over a nine-year timeframe. In 2024, that was an eight-year timeframe. In 2025, it'll be a seven-year timeframe. The reason that is important, this new allocation has the potential, there's no guarantee of this happening, but it has the potential to have more volatility, both up and down, than the old allocation. The last thing I want our investments to do is to cause the city to have to increase their contributions to the pension plan or to have those contribution rates swing wildly year over year, simply just based on the price fluctuations of the investments within the pension plan. So during the most recent experience study that Niheart conducted for the city, they had recommended the city adopt a layered amortization approach to the unfunded liability. Without getting too much into the specifics, this would allow the city to not have to worry about those wild swings in the funding rate, and it would allow the city to start amortizing both the gains and losses on a new, fresh base. So that's a decision where the city would have to decide if they wanted to amortize that over 10 or 15 years. I'm not giving my recommendation on that. Again, I'm not an actuary, but from the standpoint of how these investment changes would play into the funding rates, I think that's a very crucial component because, again, this new allocation would have about 10% more in stocks, which could, in theory, you know, lead to more volatility as we move forward. So in summary, you know, the big changes that I'm recommending, investment policy statement would be to move down the fixed income threshold to 11% from where it currently stands at 30. Introduce a new sleeve of investments, these market-linked CDs, as a 10% weighting within the pension plan. And then, most importantly, also doing the amortization change, just to make sure that we're not causing the city any undue stress as it pertains to, you know, funding rates going forward. Does anyone have any questions at all?
What were the CD rates last year?
Market-linked CD or like CDs?
Well, every time I go to the bank, I see them.
Yeah.
You should get a CD.
Over 5%.
So they were hitting 5%.
Over 5%. Yeah, I, you know, this is just like off the top of my head, I think 5.3, you know, 5.3, I think you could probably get it at some point. It's been a little while since I bought a CD.
And the performance, it's a cap, too, right? I mean, you can't go over a certain...
Yeah, so those are like traditional bank-issued CDs that you're talking about. We don't currently utilize any of those within the pension plan or the healthcare account. These market-linked CDs, what differentiates them is that they are FDIC insured, but they are always tied to a specific stock market index. So just to give you an example, these were on our calendar last month. So again, Raymond James has a structured investments desk, and they work with all the big banks. They try to figure out who's got the best terms every month. They come out with a new calendar with brand-new offerings every month. So these are all closed now, but just to give you an idea, the two-year market-linked CD, based on the S&amp;P 500 last month, had a cap rate of 13.85%.
Okay, all right.
The three-year on the Russell 2000 was a cap of 26.5%. So, you know, again, in a raging bull market, we're not going to keep up with these investments, but from a standpoint of resiliency, I personally have a lot more confidence on the stock market trending higher over time than our fixed income investments producing a real return because in order for them to produce a real return, we are reliant on inflation staying below the interest rate that we're...
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you would, I've talked to John extensively on these, and we've discussed this with the pension board and the health retirement board. I think it's critical that the board look at these options. I've even talked to him about increasing our rate of return to 6.5 from 6. I'm a big believer in tiering our investments. We're going to bring stuff to you in the future that allows us to tier some of our current holdings on a daily basis. You'll be getting that in the next month or two. We're working on that right now, where we can collect interest on money and move it around daily. I would also ask John to reconsider refocusing our goal back down to 10. As it creeps up, I think you have to watch that.
Yeah.
And pretty much stick with the program. It concerns me in both. It's creeping up a little bit.
Yeah.
Because it is volatile. With these, when you introduce these type of items, you do increase volatility, you do increase risk, but I think if you tier these, and you just heard Bob ask a very key question, it used to be the old day you lived on your fixed income and you threw a little money in the stock market and you hit or miss, and one of the other things I'm going to recommend to both boards is that we adopt what's called the smoothing method. And what he just described is it'll take out the peaks and the real lows. It'll smooth our approach to funding the retiree healthcare and the pension system so we won't experience that, and it's basically what it is, it's spread out over time, so you're not going to peak or valley all at the same time. I just ask you to keep up with this in terms of how we approach this and how we're tiering our investments and the tiering of these CD purchases, so that as we look out, we can tell, have an idea when somebody's going to retire. We can look out and see what they need is. We can look out and see what our actuary was telling us and really set ourselves up to be at the top of the game, if you will, in terms of making sure the pension system is fully funded. We're doing quite well. Did you say 73%? 74%?
Yeah, 73.35.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
That's high.
That's high for Michigan.
Yeah.
So I like to keep it there, and anything I can do to lower the contribution rate, or if the opportunity comes to add money into the system to lower costs, I would look for that opportunity in the future, but with the economy kind of uncertain and us facing some issues, I'd probably hold off on that. Katie and I have talked about that, but I just think this is a very important thing that we should consider and move forward on very candidly.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask, while you're still here, Mr. Fireick, thank you very much for the presentation, explanation. Predictability is hard to track. FDIC is in a different state in conversation in the news these days, and you've talked about some of these investments that could go for a number of years. Worst-case scenarios, if the FDIC isn't as reliable down the road, how locked in are some of these funds? I mean, that's...
Yeah.
We're talking about a lot of unknowns, I know.
You know, it's unprecedented times that we're living through, so I don't fault you for asking the question. I mean, I think we're living in time. You didn't ask for this answer, but, you know, it kind of ties into it. Banks are forced by regulation to hold government securities on the balance sheet as reserves, right? And we're living through a time where that actually caused quite a few bank failures throughout the March banking crisis of 2023. So you asking questions about the FDIC, I don't think it's off-limits, right? I, you know, I really can't deal in hypotheticals. I'd probably get in trouble if I did start talking about like the FDIC not being honored. I personally don't see that being an issue. You know, if anything, during, you know, the banking crisis, when Janet Yellen was kind of pressed at what would happen to depositors over that limit, right, there was, you know, there was obviously, there was leeway given, there was leeway given, right? And I think we live in an age where it is politically more popular to smooth over cracks than to allow the free market to have its innovative destruction. So I would always, I would almost always side with the fact that the government will come in to backstop. I mean, that is guaranteed by the United, you know, the United States government, but in regards to your question about selling the investments early, so these investments, obviously, like Bank of America, Goldman Sachs, JP Morgan, they don't make these for free. They're going to take a cut when they structure these products. So does Raymond James back... They're going to take a cut when they structure these products. So does Raymond James' back office. So very similar to if you were to buy a CD through your local bank or credit union, if you buy a one-year CD and you try to get your money out early, there's no guarantee. You're not going to get the full principal back, right? You're going to eat the underwriting cost. These investments would operate the same way. So as soon as you buy them, you're going to see the underwriting fee and the placement fee just get taken off the top of the value. When you hold them to maturity, though, so whether it's a two-year, or a three-year, or a four-year, the return is based on your original principal. So you get your original principal back, plus whatever the index did. That's how they're structured. If you were to get out early, you might have to eat that underwriting fee. And the other thing I would tell you, the reason that I would strongly recommend us not be selling these prior to maturity, there's a very limited secondary market for these securities. So typically, if you were to buy a bond, you could sell it, or a stock, or anything. You'd sell it any day, right, for the going market price. With these, typically, the only bidder would be Goldman Sachs or JP Morgan coming back in and saying, no, we'll actually buy some of these market-linked CDs back off of you. So you can get out early. The biggest reason that I would advise against that, though, is you'd probably be taking a loss on the investment if you did. And that would be dependent on, you know, obviously, what the stock market had done over that timeframe as well. But as a general rule of thumb, I would say expect these to price very ugly on a statement until it gets closer to the maturity date. That's just been my experience. So it's going to kind of look ugly. It's not going to track directly in line with the stock index, but as you get closer to that end of the term, it'll more closely represent it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
On to 5B, we have the reservations website presentation by Clerk Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is a polarizing presentation here, so...
Pardon my voice as well. Just getting over a cold. Get it up here on that screen, maybe. All right, on our city website here, you'll see, I'm not sure what I have up. On the homepage of our city website, to make a reservation for any of our facilities in the city, which is the New Guy Center here, former Lyons Club on Ford Street, the Mariner Park Pavilion, and also the 300 Bandstand, you will make those reservations now through the website. So if you go to our homepage, these little bubbles, as I like to call them, or refer to them as, all the way at the bottom right, make a reservation. If you click on that, it'll take you to our reservations page. I apologize for the annoying pop-up, but then nobody can say that they didn't see any important information on every page. So you'll see you're on the reservation site here. Three steps. It's a little bit cumbersome at this point, just because right now, our payment system isn't really cooperating with the website. So a few steps you have to do here. The first one, if you're a big fan of reading, you read the entire step one. But if you scroll down, you'll see our available properties here. So we'll focus on the Guy Center here. So if you'd like to rent or, you know, reserve that space at all, you would just click on this. Photo coming soon. You'll scroll down. It's got some information here. It's got the rental fees, different breakdowns that you guys had approved previously. But if you scroll down, you'll see a calendar. And since February is almost over, I'm going to go into March, so we get a little bit bigger view. So if you see the calendar here, if you see the date blank, that date's not available. So you'll go to a date that you're interested in, and it'll say date open. If you want to say, if you want to rent, March 8th, you'll click on date open to select that, and then reserve right on this side. They are all-day rentals. So if you select this and you change your times, it'll still be available to you from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM for that specific site. And I'll get into a little bit more details as I push forward in this. But you would click reserve here. It's going to take you to this page. We are working on this issue here, as it only gives you the day and the time. It doesn't give you a specific date. The developers at Munibit are working on that to fix that. I've been in contact with them. They're working diligently, so they've got to write some code, I think, to get that in there. But they are working on it. They are aware. This is the part that is kind of iffy. You're not going to see a fee in here. It is an all-day rental, and that rental application is separate, and the invoicing is also separate. It makes it easier for us in-house with transition to BSN A Cloud to do the invoicing through accounts receivable, instead of underwriting through their payment processor and having multiple payment processors. It just doesn't make sense. So from here, you're going to click begin request. You would fill out all of your information, and I'll go through this just real quick. I'm going to have a lot of spelling errors, but... And then you'll hit final review, and it'll take you through. Again, you're not going to see a price, so you're just going to scroll to the bottom. If there's anything that you want the city to know about that space, you know, we'll be using this for graduation party, a birthday party, a wedding. Put that in there. If there's any relevant information that you want us to know about that reservation, please put that in there, and we'll see it on our end. And then you would complete the process. Once that's complete, you'll see request has been processed. We'll get that on our end to approve it. You'll get another email once that's approved, that your request has been approved. But once you do that, you'll have to go back to this screen. You will then fill out this rental application in this section. So if you click on this, this is one of the very few actual fillable PDFs on our website without having to download it. Again, another work in progress. They just launched the fillable PDF option on their website, so we're working on building those out. But you go through and fill in all of these blanks, select which facility that you want. The Guy Community Center is split up into three portions at the moment. One is just the event hall. One's the hall and the pavilion. One is the club room, which is specifically reserved at this moment for social organizations. Just go through and fill in all the information. Make sure you read. There's important information in here about cleaning fees, cancellation, the city reserving the right to cancel. Fill all of this out. You can sign it here. And then, once you're done, you are going to save it. Or not. Oops. There is an option to save, I promise. It's probably because I didn't type anything in there. You will hit save. And then, once back here, you hit this submit button. If you hit this submit button, it comes to us electronically, and then we have all the information we need. We sign it on our end, and then we ship that final contract back to the renter. So please fill that out online. If that's not an option for you, we do have hard copies. We can email you. You can print them out, fill them out by hand. Come in here and fill them out by hand. But this is easier for us, so it's all in one spot. And then, lastly, as soon as we get that, we're going to create an invoice and send you an invoice for that rental. The link for that is here, which is our new BSN A Online Payments website. You will go here once you have it, and you don't need to click on anything. It takes you right where you need to go. So you can search this by name. It's not going to come up for me because I don't have anything in there. But if you click on this and search your name, and then search it, you're going to see an invoice here and an amount that you owe. You can pay it right online with a credit card, with an e-check. There are fees that do apply. Once we get notice that that is paid, we will then approve your reservation, and then you'll get that notice and an email that your reservation has been approved. So that is how you use our new reservation site. And it is still a work in progress. The fees, again, are at the bottom of this as well, if you want to see that. They're also on the last page. Of that application, there are some different ones for the different facilities down here as well. The Bandstand terms and the Mariner Park Pavilion rental terms, as those weren't built into that, the actual rental application that is kind of a catch-all for all of them. But there are certain terms for those. But that is our reservation site. If there's something that you see online that's not available on one of those dates, please call us. We'll check into it, because some of those are all-day reservations. But if they're at night, and you need a day rental for maybe a funeral wake or something like that, we can definitely accommodate people for that reason. So the number that people knew for the Lyons Club is still the same. We now have that number here at city offices. So if you're used to calling that, still call that. Either myself will answer it, or Deputy Clerk Carol Brown will answer it, and we'll get any questions that you need answered. With that, do you guys have any questions on that?
I have one.
Yeah.
How do they submit their insurance forms if that's...
They would have to send that via email if they have it. And we can do that closer to the date. That doesn't need to be submitted right then. We're kind of working on, we have to tweak that form just a little bit, because there's not a spot on there that says, will you have alcohol? It just says, you must notify the city. So they can do that by calling us. They can send us an email saying we plan on having, and then we'll request that liability insurance at that point, too.
Okay. All right, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to six for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address this commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. If we respond, we will follow up as necessary. Please direct your comments towards the commission and through myself as the chair.
When I first came here, my name is Tony Miegank. I got compared a lot to my grandfather, Arthur Miegank. I was told that he, that he, that, you know, that he was like a lot of people, like he was a teacher to them. And I guess I just wanted to state, and I thought he respectful to let people know this. He has passed away yesterday.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah. So I just thought it'd be respectful to let you guys know what happened. I didn't want to let you guys in the dark on it. So I just thought it'd be respectful, and I think I just thought I would share that. I've got no relevant city business today, so...
Anybody else? Any other public comment? Okay. Moving on to seven, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of February 6, 2025?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. On to eight for the consent agenda, we have A, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, B, the Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, C, the Planning Commission, January 13, 2025 meeting minutes, D, the University of Michigan Dearborn East Cities Program, and E, the DPW Thank You Letter. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Nine items removed from consent agenda. There are none. So moving on to 10, and financial business. We have expenditures, including payroll, of $116,640.25. I have motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $116,640.25.
Make a motion. We approve expenditures, including payroll, for $116,640.25.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, 10B, the preliminary financial statements for January 2025. I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements of January 2025.
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to C, the pension investment policy statement change. Can I have a motion to approve the pension investment policy statement as presented?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to D, for the outstanding sidewalk assessment review and collection decision. And have City Manager.
Yes, I may ask Katie to talk about those, but you see a memo on your paperwork tonight from Katie in regards to the outstanding sidewalk assessment review. And what we're looking for is a determination from the commission as to what you want us to do with these. I think she's explained it quite clearly in the background information provided to you and gave you two options. I will tell you, it would be my recommendation that we utilize option two. At this point, I am not convinced that if we were to choose option one, that the county would even take these debts that are over six years old and place them on the tax rolls. And this has been an issue that's been going on since 2018. I would prefer, and I think Katie would prefer, I won't speak for her, a clean slate to work from. Neither one of us were here during this time period. We'd like to have a clean slate and work forward in terms to deal with issues like this and make sure that they're taken care of in a timely manner. I know there's been some past history where we forwarded things to the county, and the county has refused to put them on the tax rolls, and then you're left with debt. One of my concerns is things like this are still left on our balance sheet, I apologize, on our balance sheet as revenues. And it's a false revenue. You're not going to ever receive these funds. So those type of things should be really stricken from that, and we should eventually wipe these debts clear. They're non-collectible at this point, in my eyes. But for us to continue to carry them as a expected revenue is not a true picture of what our revenues are. And we may be bringing you some other debts that we find that are six and seven years old. It's time to wipe them from the books, so we have a much clearer vision of what our actual revenues that we expect are. Katie, did I miss anything? Did you want to add anything?
No, the decision is yours. I will do whatever you want.
The only thing I'd, so for future, if we go back to some of these programs, there will be a way that we don't get into this issue again, because I know you said you were going to make it so that we could find these things.
Yes, and what will happen is that these will be done on a yearly basis now. We won't get involved in this where you're waiting two and three years. I mean, we like to use COVID for a lot of excuses. That's not a good excuse for sound business management or good governance. You can make a decision in terms of when the debt is not paid, what to do with the debt, but we should still stick with our same practice of this, how it's going to be handled. We're going to bill the homeowner. It's the homeowner. There's interest charges assessed for non-payment, and what happens when the debt's not paid? It should be turned over to the tax rolls. We cannot afford to continue to carry these type of things. And very candidly, it's not fair to the taxpayer that does do everything they're supposed to and pays their debts on time or takes care of these open obligations, because the rest of taxpayers kind of carry their weight then.
You know, back when they started this, I know I gave you some info on it, but, you know, the contractor was supposed to provide so that the person can get some of their money back. He never provided half that. I mean, I know I had to deal with him, and I made him sign a paper right while I had him standing there. But I know a lot of people complained. I mean, they couldn't get him to do the issue, then they didn't know what to do, and, you know...
And there was a complaint over how the issues were handled, and it didn't appear that we did or our representative on behalf of watching the contractor took good notes or kept abreast. All we got was a final bill into the offices that says X amount wasn't paid. What do you do with it? And we let it sit for six, we didn't let it sit, but it sat for six years. By then, it's too late. So, I mean, to be honest with you, as looking over the documentation, the whole process that was utilized...
The ownership change.
Yeah, it was, yeah, there's multiple. It was flawed right from the get-go.
Yeah.
All right. Can I have a motion then for either option one or two?
Make motion to adopt option two of the outstanding sidewalk reimbursement.
Support.
Any other discussion?
No, just so everybody knows, it was a total of $7,704.59. We're up to eat.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On 11 for unfinished business, there is none. On our 12 for new business... Under 12 for new business, we have the Board of Review Appointment. Can I have support to appoint John Pollan to the Board of Review for a term ending December of 2027?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rurk.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And to B, for the Cotreville Township Water and Sewer Agreement. City Attorney.
Yes, um, as, as you know, with the direction from the city manager, we're trying to formalize and standardize our relationships on water distribution to other entities. This is one of them. We paused on this one a little because they were in the middle of changing legal counsel. We met with legal counsel today, and we have a meeting set for next week. What we're looking for this evening is for the, the boilerplate agreement that you, uh, have been provided to serve as the basis for our initial negotiations with Cotreville on the, on the water issues. I could go back in time and tell you about all the different agreements that are floating around out there on, on that relationship. This is an attempt to bring all those into one document that, um, predominantly sets forth the concept that people we provide water to will pay the same as our citizens pay with all of the service charges, ready-to-serv charge issues, and all the other elements of what our folks pay is, is going to be in these agreements. So, we're just looking for that template to serve as the basis of our initial negotiations.
Can I ask, um, is, is this township being fairly cooperative with what we're proposing here, you think? Or where is this going to go?
Yeah, so far, so.
Yeah, trying to understand what it says, and.
My, my understanding from the various reports here is that they're interested in several of our services, and moving in this direction just seems smooth and easy.
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, I, I know they're, um, they're recently appointed lawyer very well, and I think, uh, discussions will be very positive.
Great.
I'll make a motion that we utilize the provided agreement as a starting point for future water and sewer rate negotiations with Cotreville Township.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurk.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And to C, the City Commission Meeting Procedure and Policy. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission Meeting Policy Procedure as presented?
Some more. Support.
Any discussion?
Just a couple of quick questions, if I may. Mr. Davis, um, I think you can help me out here. The, um, can you highlight any significant changes from this, where we've been operating previously to how we'll operate under this, with any specifics? I've, I've heard before I joined the board, for example, conflicting, uh, expectations about Roberts Rules of Order being used for this body.
Sure.
But we're, we're fully embracing this at this point.
Yeah, so, um, I, let me call out some of the highlights, as, as you requested, that might be different than the way we operate. Um, we're only adopting Roberts Rules of Order with respect to motion priority. And we've gone through this before, where you, you have something pending, somebody calls the question. I advise you, under Roberts Rules, the call of the question has to be prioritized ahead of the other discuss, you know, those types of things.
Yeah.
So I do have an exhibit that I'll be, uh, sending out that sort of simplifies those priorities. Number two, there's going to be a prohibition in this procedure that, um, sitting commissioners do not speak during public comment period, that you reserve your time for, uh, speaking at commissioner privilege. There's language in here now that says what is to be allowed during commissioner privilege. It's not a time to amend the agenda with a new topic. But it is a time to say, hey, I, I've been thinking about something, I'm just letting you know, I'm going to propose that it be on a future agenda, so I suggest everybody start thinking about it. Certainly a time for that, time for you to announce events, things that are special to you. So that's all in there now. We do, we did, um, impose formally now a, um, a 10 o'clock, uh, uh, meeting, um, time, where if we're, if we're hitting, um, 10 o'clock, there has to be a vote to extend, um, uh, for each 30 minutes. Um, we have limited the timeframe for commissioner privilege to five minutes, which we thought was reasonable. We've also limited the current time for public comment to be five minutes. Um, we have formalized the process to use, um, uh, for disruptions during our meeting. Um, under all law and under all aspects of, of local government, you're entitled to be able to conduct a meeting that is suitable to carry out the business of this city. If there's a disruption that gets to a point where you're unable to carry out the business of the city, we've put in a process for, uh, warning, we put in a process for second warning, and then, um, we, we have a process for removal. We've also made it clear that the removal from any one meeting is not the ban of you coming to future meetings, which is also, um, consistent with the law. So, we, we have some other things that we're, we're not in previous, uh, also, we, we, we're trying to put a little limit on people who want to bring signage, uh, you know, little protest signs. We've kind of limited the size, which I think we're allowed to do, um, so that they don't disrupt the meeting and, and the filming of, of, of the meeting. We have some things in here on just general rules of decorum. We, we, we think that, uh, um, the, the, the people speaking at public comment should direct our comments to the, to the chairperson, which is normally the mayor. Um, we don't want communications from the podium going out into the audience and then start a, a back and forth. Um, we don't think that, um, under the rules of decorum, that, that, um, the people on this commission should be speaking, um, you know, above another person, that, you know, people should be allowed to finish their thought before a new person speaks. The one, the one motion that I think is the most important that, that has changed in here is that what we're, what we're looking for from, uh, the initial presentation of a topic is, is just that, the presentation of the topic, I'm presenting this one, city manager presents most of them, the mayor may be presenting, or any one of you who has sponsored an issue may be presenting, that we go to a positive motion, a, a motion to approve, a second, and then discussion. If the motion fails, then that's a denial of, of the issue. If the motion is approved, then, then the, the subject. So Roberts Rules of Order tends to take the first motion to be a positive motion. And so we will, we have formalized that. Um, other than that, what, what I did with Jason, who was a big help, uh, because he, he, you know, he gets the meetings ready for you guys, kind of, is we just sat down and we said, okay, what do we do from the beginning? Well, he gathers up this, we, we look for agenda items, that we consult on the agenda items, we word the agenda items. Jason gathers up all the background for the agenda items, we get it out, we post it, you know, we, so we, we tried to track you guys all the way through a meeting and everything that might happen during the meeting. That was the, the intent of the policy. And this is one that's required under your new charter provision. Slowly whittling away at that list, um, but, um, this is one of the, one of the remaining.
Two, two other points I want to raise, just for more of like, public knowledge about this. Um, one clarification, like, signs are absolutely allowed, not that you said they weren't.
Absolutely allowed, we're just regulating the skies.
18 inches long, 18 inches wide. We've got multiple cameras up here that we need to not block with something bigger, but they, they are permitted, um, if anyone was concerned by that. Um, the other thing I, I wanted just to highlight for the public knowledge on this, too, is this does prevent us from abstaining unless it's pretty much a conflict of interest. Uh, for most issues, we have to vote yea or nay.
Yes, and, and, and the way it's written is, um, you kind of go with my opinion on that, and if we have to adjourn, for me to give you a written opinion on that, we wait on the issue. You're elected to vote, there's only very limited circumstances when you're, when you can say, I don't want to vote. You were elected to vote, that's a predominant theory. Um, conflict of interest, I know the definition, I'll always know the definition, and I'll be able to advise you.
Yeah, I, that one's really important to me, just a highlight of, at times commissioners vote in somewhat wonky ways of, like, it's not quite what we want to do, but it's the best option we have, and that's why we can't just abstain from an issue. We have to, we have to cast that vote. Um, we're, we're, we're kind of compelled to do it, it's our role to do it. Thank you for going over that. I'm, I'm, I like my policies, happy with it, thank you. Stop that.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things. Um, in public comment.
Page?
Uh, 10. So I've had this, uh, from people in the public before, say they're out of town, and they can't be there, and they want a letter to come in, and they want us to have that put into the minutes, and they'd like it read. What happens in that case? Because sometimes they can't attend.
Okay, so we've addressed that, um.
You did it in public hearings, but not.
We could, oh, I see what you're saying, you want that in public comment as well. We normally don't take letters in on public comment.
Correct, but.
Um, but if, if, if the clerk gets a letter, and there's a request that it be made, put it on the public record, it gets in.
Okay.
So you would, you, you would want, if somebody said, I'd like the following to be, I thi, I think Lisa, they have to be here for public comment.
Well, either that, or if there's a topic on here and they want to submit, whether there's a public hearing, not, not more than just a public hearing, and they can't be here.
Okay.
Okay, you know what I'm saying?
So, so if, if somebody wants to submit a letter on a agenda item.
Correct.
And they ask that it be part of the record, I can, I can make that change.
Yes, but if they can't be.
That's not a problem, that's, that was one.
Clarification, what do you mean, make that change where we would read the letter, or it'd be part of the consent agenda? Because we've been putting it on the consent agenda.
Unless they, unless they have specifically requested in their letter, that'd be read at the agenda item, which is very rare.
Okay.
Okay, that's one. Um, on page, uh, well, that's, I can live with that, I guess. The signs, I did that one. The three warnings, oh, so on the three warnings, is that?
Where are you at, Lisa?
Uh, page 13 for removal. Is that per, per issue, or, I mean, you know, sometimes, in one meeting, if.
If you're removed from a meeting, you're, you're, you're gone for the entire balance of that meeting.
Okay, all right, that's.
You don't come, you don't come back on the next agenda item.
If in, if in the public comment, or the public hearing, whatever, you get two gavels, and then later on, on another one, you get another gavel, does that throw you out of the meeting?
Do they, yeah, then do they add up?
It's, I guess.
No, they all add up, there, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
But they're not carrying over from one meeting to the next.
No, no.
Like, it's all within, yeah.
It's all within one meeting.
It's within the city commission.
Yeah, so it does make it, okay.
That's it, that's it for me.
Two, oh, sorry.
About the, during the commissioner privilege, the five minutes, I, I'm not sure I agree with that. I mean, we're all adults, pretty much, here, and especially for the mayor, shows us lots of, um, good things, and other people do, too. Um, are we going to have a little timer on us now?
No, you know, we, we spent a lot of time on this one.
Okay.
Um, I, I had no time limit. Then we went to 10 minutes, and then we, I did the math, I said, 10, 10, 10. We're adding an hour to each meeting. Um, and then we said, well, I'll make it consistent with public comment. We could just leave it off. Um, but I don't want to get in a situation where, you know, somebody uses the time and just filibusters for an hour. I, 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 I'm receptive to your thoughts on this. I mean, generally, we've been tracking it, the three of us have been tracking it. None of you even come close to five minutes, generally.
And the option is to ask for additional time.
Okay.
And I could do that, I could say, you know, it's in there.
Yeah.
I, I did say a person at, at, at commissioner privilege can ask his, his fellow, um.
So this is just to keep somebody that's been doing a filibuster, so we have some option.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to.
Somebody's going on and.
I don't want the commissioner privilege, which is a very important part of your meeting, to become a weapon, you know, against all the other commissioners, where, you know, I'm going to talk on some topic forever.
But I just want people to be cut off when they have legitimate things to talk about.
But, you know, if you're running up and you say, look, I just need a little more time, and your fellow commissioners say, okay, then you just get.
We do that, too. Um, this was one, too, with this five-minute issue, even in public comment, can a person give their five minutes?
No.
All right, you might want to address that.
I can, you know, that, that whole thing where I'm yielding to the proud senator from Kentucky is, is, uh, is, uh, is not going to fly.
But it's not here, so.
Yeah, and it's happened before.
Yes.
It has happened.
They will use it here.
Okay.
If you do.
I'll take care of it.
Bye.
I'd love to take care of it.
All right, good.
Hey, so when something like that is not expressly in the policy, what is the expectation? Does it exist or not exist? If it's not written in our stated policy, should the public assume that power should exist? Or should they assume it does not?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that. So this is, this is our affirmative rules, right? And these are our powers, and if it's not stated, then it's, it's not.
Okay.
So I'll fix the, um, I'll fix the one where you can't give away your five minutes, you know, 30 seconds to, uh, to listen to more about investment policies. Sorry, buddy. Last meeting, we had the audit, so you're looking pretty good. So I'll fix that, but are, are there any other general tones that you're looking for in your? This, this guides you, so like, you guys should be very important. I, we, we tried, the three of us, tried to capture everything we, and I had a lot of notes from you. We tried to capture what we had been hearing from you on meeting issues.
One, one last question for this. This is explicitly city commission policy.
Yes.
Will this apply to our other boards, um, whether strictly or as a guideline?
This is a guideline right now, and we, we, we haven't taken a position on the management and procedure for other boards and commissions yet.
I, my, my one concern about if we expect them to follow this closely, you're not going to be in the room always. Um, our city manager won't always be in the room for some of those boards, our clerk won't always be in the room for some of those. That could get tricky on making sure that they know how to, and that they need to.
Yes, we.
And, like, a conflict of interest definition, things like this will, will be a little bit more challenging.
We, we, we are looking at that, and we may have to issue something.
Okay.
So if we didn't miss any big categories, I'll, I'll fine-tune this, and maybe you can just approve it subject to those changes, um, and we can put this into our policy manual, and then we'll be headed towards the next one.
And you'll send us an update?
Yep.
All right, so you need to amend the motion.
I will amend my motion to approve it with the proposed updates.
Support.
And we have a roll call, please.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurk.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, on to D, the General City Manager Annual Review Policy.
So, um, this is another one that's required. The, the policy itself is fairly easy. Our policy is going to be that there'll be an annual review. Our policy is also going to be that under the Open Meetings Act, the city manager can trigger a review under, uh, 15.268A, into a closed session at any time on any topic. Our, our question to you is, what is the attached form, which is really the basis of the review? So I gave you one that was very generic, the manager has provided more examples this evening. There's numerical, there's, you know, paragraph narrative. There's numerical, there's, you know, paragraph narratives, there's all kinds of ways you can go on this. The policy's going to be annually at least once, and we're looking at January, so it's pre-budget. Compliance with the Open Meetings Act and he can, or she can trigger a review anytime under the Open Meetings Act, consistent with the law. The form is where we need your help.
I know, I prefer more the narrative information. I think that's important to clearly, you know, show you what expectations are to define why we, we believe in a certain way, that you're doing a good job, great job, average job. I think the numbers, having a lot of categorized with one through five scoring can get tricky because my three is not necessarily another commissioner's three and the five. And then if you have somebody that's consistently a three and average, you know, where do you go with that? You know, so I think that we would need, I'd rather have more narrative or similar other kind of breakout categories.
Okay.
Two comments briefly. One regarding the policy. Does it matter that it's reviewed annually during January?
Well, we.
Since, just since we're out of January, yeah.
Yeah. The, the city manager specifically requested that it be, at this point, January because getting marching orders in January as you're heading into budget is very helpful because during a budget, if the budget's not lining up with the expectations from the review, then we, we have to reconcile that.
And that's an area of my contract that'll have to be amended because my contract calls for evaluated annually or semi-anually, added under the date of hire. But I felt it should be happening in January and I also felt that, very candidly, this board should be working with staff and myself to set annual goals and how to achieve those goals. And that should be done, some of those goals have to be done through the budget process. You can't say, we want X, Y, and Z done and then not appropriate any money to get X or Y done. Just so you know, I firmly believe in, in a review policy. I think it's important, not only for you, but for me. I'll make a decision at the time that this comes up, whether I choose to do that in public or in private. But there's pros and cons out of either way. I would ask you to, I'd look for an understanding of what are you hoping to achieve out of it? What's each of you wanting to achieve? So if somebody scored all ones, what's the process on that? What, what does that lead to? Or they score all threes, is that tied to compensation? Is that tied to, what's it tied to? What's it mean to you? If there's a, if there's a mixture or if there's all fours and one areas are one and I agree to release that to the press, the press will not focus on the all fours areas. They will focus on the one, understand, and as will most people, they gravitate towards the car wreck versus the careful driver. That's just how it works. And I understand that. I think it's important that you have an opportunity to speak openly and candidly with your city manager. But at least on my behalf, you should be prepared to have that done three sixty, me back to you. So perhaps sometimes for some of you, that may be more comfortable in a closed session. I don't mind saying that in a public session, but I'm just offering that, that I think it's a two-way street in terms of having that discussion. I just think that I, I would like to see board consensus on what's to be achieved, what's the process and what are the numbers, what does it mean out of it? I do agree with the mayor that a combination of narrative and verbal discussion, if you have to have some, I'm okay with that. Whether it's not numbers and acceptable, not acceptable, or, or good, bad, or indifferent, or whatever it comes up with, what are you looking to achieve out of it and how, what is that rate? The professor may look at a C as an average student and say, that's, you're doing a good job. If I get threes from you, very candidly, I'll look at myself and say, what are you doing wrong? But that's me. That's how I operate. That's my expectations of myself. There's nothing, no reflection on you. Other people say, I'm average. I'm doing great. Things are perfect. Let's just keep motoring along. Is, how is it tied to compensation? Is it tied to compensation? Should it be tied to compensation? I'm going to evaluate the rest of the employees. They are all on, on different levels, you know. So I guess these are the, the questions I guess I'd ask you to think about when you look through the forms and come up with a form. I'm okay with whatever process you come up with. I'm, I'm a big guy. I can get it. If I'm falling short, I'll ask you to show me where I'm falling short and give me a pathway to move forward, to solve problems. In the same token, if you say you didn't achieve goal B, you didn't shine all the cemetery stones, you didn't get that done, you started in October and it wasn't done in November, I'll ask you to point out to me in the public meeting where you issued me goals that we agreed upon, that you gave me the budget and the staff in order to achieve the goals. Fair? I know you didn't do that. You didn't set no goals. I came in here in a firestorm and it's been one bucket after another since then. But we should go forward and have a, a goal-setting session. I'd like to do that. But also pick our brains and collectively say, this is what we're looking for. This is the expectation. This is the path we choose to, to achieve it. And we could move away as a staff from these one catastrophe to another to some type of normalcy where we get to an hour and a half meeting. We do, as Bob says, we take care of business. It, it gets to be a little mundane, but we're taking care of city business. We're, we're getting there. So that's my thought process. Take a look at the forms. I agree with the policy. I got no problem with, if you want to stick with the one Bob gets, comes from ICMA. Bob says he made some changes. I'm familiar with that one. Some of the other ones, I took some of the city names off them, but I left some of the other ones on, but your choice.
A few thoughts on this, if I may here. Firstly, I do think January's an interesting time to be doing it as you may have a new board, right? Like in, after election years.
We talked about, that was tough.
So I, I'm glad that's at least been considered as how this would affect it. The other thing, one of the, the questions here in the ones you provided, Mr. Davis, involves like how the city manager interacts with department heads and takes feedback from department heads and incorporates ideas. I, I don't know that the board can comfortably evaluate that because the department heads are largely reporting to us through the city manager. The city manager is telling us what that reporting looks like. Some mechanism in here about how department heads are feeling would probably be a useful tool somewhere in the evaluation process. Not necessarily to us, maybe directly to the mayor, however that process would, would look like.
Got it.
Fives are the high rating. A lot of employees, when they see those, it's very upsetting that you get all the highest marks and not a raise. And it's, it's an upsetting process when you say, well, I'm doing everything outstanding in the most excellent form and there's no raise attached. And for anyone who's been through that process, not that I'm speaking from experience, it, it can be a very frustrating moment. But finally, and you said that you'll be evaluating our city employees or department heads, we should consider matching your process or your process matching ours. Because those expectations for how our employees go, when we look at you as our employee, should be consistent with how you look at the employees under you. And just like you said, some, you know, if we gave you the task of shining up, you know, our tombstones here in our graveyards and you come back and say, well, you didn't give us the employees, that's a fair question for the employees to ask their manager when they're asked a similar sort of question. So I'd ask that if you have a process, maybe you can send that to us as well for these packets that we consider, at least as a jumping off point. I would be interested in matching personally.
So as an example, and I don't have any underachieving employees at this point, especially in the department head staff. They're all well qualified and do an excellent job. But if I evaluated employee and I felt they had potential that they hadn't reached it and I'm pushing them a little bit and they then don't get the raise that they're expecting because they see themselves at a five, but I see them at a three point five. And then the next month you come along and say, rate your city manager, how's it going? I think he's too tough. I deserved a five and a raise at a five percent and you only gave us three and a half percent. Aren't you the champion for the employee there, Sean?
Oh, fair.
You gotta be careful with that.
Yes.
Remember the, so my question to you is if you answer that question, how do the department heads or employees feel about the city manager? My first question is, did you have contact with employees without the city manager being aware? Because that's a violation.
No, and that's why I said, if that's coming in, it should, it needs to have a process.
There has to be.
I, it, and like one of these questions on the packet provided was like, you know, how are the department heads, you know, opinions taken into consideration? I can't go to our department heads over here and ask them. And so I can't answer that question. But I'm interested in that feedback in some manner. However, that needs to be collected.
Just take a couple of these and look at it and there might be some that are non-applicable. Just cross them, cross it out and we'll, we work it. Yeah, just cross it out.
So I, I have another question. I know you mentioned it about goal-setting. I, I firmly believe that without that, you're just kind of going about as best you can. But you should have goals from this body to work towards. Are you envisioning that, that to happen at the same time as the review?
No.
Or shortly thereafter?
Before.
That's going to be, or before, but it's going to be a, obviously a, a, a little lengthy discussion.
I'd like to have a goal-setting session here within the next month and a half.
Okay.
And in terms of, I don't know if we'll get the, the review done or whatever, but I'm not worried about the, I'd rather have the goal session.
Yeah.
I've already asked for goals from each one of the departments from 2025. That was done in January. I also interviewed each of you and asked what your goals would say, what are the things you wanted to accomplish? I also had a, a, a list of their top five and the top eight that I sent to you. And I regularly refer back to them and say, what have I checked off for the treasurer? Check BSNA, check this, check that, whatever it is, and then what's still standing? What is the police department not gotten that they said they had to have or what were the issues they DPW? Same thing I want to do with you folks. Let's sit down, but I will tell you, I will bring in the department heads into that process because they're key. I can deliver goals. They drive the goal. Okay? They've got to tell me, hey, look, this is achievable, but I've got to have this and this. And did you think about we're doing this at the same time? This will impact that. They should be part of that process because they're part of the team.
I, I absolutely agree.
And we should all agree on what goals are achievable, attainable, achievable, you know, have value. And we don't make it too unrealistic, but they're achievable goals and, and they're, and they're goals that make a difference, I guess. Let's not just say, hey, I'll get the floors shined bright and, and that'll be it. That's, let's something, show something that means something.
Being that I've done a few of these for the city here and, and even I had them, working at General Motors, we always had the goals. They would have, they would set some, they would ask us to set some for ourselves and then we would do that and then we'd have a mid-year and we'd have an end year and we'd do the whole thing. We never used the numeric stuff. It was all, because I'll tell you, we have used this numeric variant and it's basically done squad. It hasn't really materialized any, of any value, I hate to say, and we did it for quite a few times.
Yeah, I, I've never been a huge fan of it myself.
No, I agree. No.
So Jake, you, you, your military background is shining a little bit because you and I went through the same type of reviews. General Motors, paramilitary. It was always, the, the expectation for the base performance is always there. The city manager is going to have a base performance. In the military, you were, you would sit down and you would sign the document that said you're going to, you know, you have your base performance. But here are the nine things we're going to agree that you're going to concentrate on. And then your next review was really about the nine things. And then there was new, a new set of nine things. And so that's, and it evolved over time. That's difficult, but effective. And that's exactly how it's done in the, the military and General Motors. So you guys, we need to table this one.
Yep.
But we wanted, we wanted you to know that the three of us down here are working pretty hard on this to try to get something effective.
So the, the one, one comment I, I have is for that goal-setting session, should we codify that in the policy that says we shall have that? Because I know we've said it many a time, we're going to do it and we're going to do it and it never happened.
Yep.
And it's a disservice to the city manager not to have it.
Once a year, a goal-setting and then once a year a review?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have to do it.
We'll put that in the policy, well.
You're right.
I mean, we're trying to develop these policies as, 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 you know, we're going to do it. So we'll put a goal-setting and, and a review.
Out of curiosity with, you know, the city manager can kind of make the decision if the review process is somewhat closed session. There's, there's powers around this. So goal-setting, always open session, does that have a bearing?
Should be an open session.
Yeah. Goal, goal-setting is, is not a performance review governed by that provision. The goal-setting is really you.
Right.
In conjunction, you know, it's not, it's not a review. It's a, yeah. So it's not governed by that exception.
I would hope we'd work together as a team, determine, take a list, everybody give five goals and then we review those five and then we prioritize those five. Then we see which ones are realistic and then after we prioritize them, we, we review them and then set those five goals. I think when you try to do too much, you tend to fail. Realistic goals, attainable goals, there's a matrix I follow in terms of, of goals and how we achieve them and how we go about them. And, but we also have to be flexible enough to understand that we may have these goals, but shit happens. Stuff happens that you can't, what we've been through here lately. Those have to be put off to the side while we deal with other stuff in terms of, life happens.
All right, so.
So are you looking for a motion to table?
Recommend this be tabled till the next meeting for further review.
I'll make a motion to table.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed? On to thirteen for administrative reports. We have A, the city attorney report.
I'm good, I'm good. Just, just remember we're, we're plowing through these policies. And you guys are doing a great job at a quick pace and thanks for letting us know you've been reading them.
All right, and B for city manager report.
I've sent you my average.
Seven, seven and a half page.
My seven and a half page report to you today. It's another average work. But I do want to, if you didn't take a note yet, I'll announce that the city was awarded $25,000 today by the St. Clair County Community Foundation as part of a grant wrote, our team wrote in terms of asking for assistance for CCTV, security systems, keypad access, a number of different things that we're doing over at the Guy Center. And as I've indicated to you, we have a number of different grants that have already been applied for. Some of them are still in the process and we're putting our finishing work together in terms of the federal earmarks. That'll be done the first week of March. We get together to submit some of those. So just so as you're well aware, we're, you may not see them right away. You may not hear from them. There's different due dates, but they are being submitted on a regular basis. I also want to thank the staff, the DPW, Katie, Jim, good guy here, and Aaron Actonson in terms of being willing to take on, this has been a stressful week for a lot of the employees. We took on a big project, BSNA Cloud. It's brand new to some people. It's new to all of us in terms, it's different than what we were used to working on. We don't know the power of it yet because we haven't been able to drill down into it. We can see great things that are going to really help us in the future. It's just going to be a little bit of a road to get there, to understand it and be able to be mindful with it and know what we can get out of it. But they've been real good about it and I can't thank them enough for that type of work.
I hear the floor is done over at the Guy Center.
The floor is done. Jason was going to arrange a tour date and time. The floor is done, the painting's done. It, it is, it is remarkable. Jason, I don't know if you want to comment on it or you want to arrange something for them or?
Well, we can set something up. I do have some photos before and after, but we can set up some sort of an open house when you guys are available. Take a look at it. Or if you just want to get ahold of me, I can meet you over there and.
Do it an hour before the next meeting or something or whatever, but it, it is amazing to see the difference. to, to see the difference.
Yeah, I just can't wait to not see the shuffleboard.
It's not there anymore. It's not there.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Don't bring your masking tape to create, I don't wanna get it.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and to reports from department heads, we have a few here tonight.
I don't wanna say something, my, uh, no, the tax ladies, we might as well talk about taxes. Are you using the election? Shh. So when our taxes were due, the eighteen, so we're past that time, um, but you still have, I just want, uh, everybody to know, you still have till the twenty-eighth of February to pay them here, before you have to pay them at the county, if you haven't paid them already, so, just a reminder, that's about ten days. And BSNA's been fun. It's been a lot, but it's been fun. There is a lot of really great features, we just, we're building things out and adding in data so that we can use it, it's been long days and nights, but it'll be really, really good in the sun. So thank you for approving that.
Excellent.
Should I mention something about the, the mini-grant, the accreditation?
Sure.
So Senator Anthony and I, um, started talks about getting the department to an accreditation standard. If you do any type of research or whatnot, um, a lot of departments are moving that way to get to a certain standard statewide and nationwide. Um, it's gonna be a costly project, which we'll present to you during the budget time, but before that, part of the module we're gonna need is called a power DMS, you need to appoint an accreditation manager, whatnot. Um, I applied for the, the mini-grant where we were awarded, I believe it was twenty, it was twenty-seven hundred dollars, it's a small chunk of change, but it's a, it's a chunk of change nonetheless, to help us through this process. So that's kind of what our big plans are going, moving forward this year with the police department. It's gonna take, if we can get this approved, you know, when we do the presentation, um, to you guys, it'll take about a year, year and a half to get to full accreditation standards, you gotta go through a mock assessment, there's a lot to do. What this will do is, it'll be a full review of all of our policies, our property room audits, you name it, it's going to revamp our police department in a good way. So looking forward to bringing that back to you. So just wanna let you know, we were awarded that small piece of money to start that process with the full project to, to come due during the budget season. So anybody has any questions?
Yeah, that's great.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City clerk?
I'll be quick, I promise. Um, forgive me, I didn't have, I didn't print an additional one, but I just wanted to remind everybody, Saturday, April twelfth is our Community Shred Day, Part Two, uh, ten AM to one PM here in front of City Hall, you'll see the shred truck parked out front, uh, just in front of my office, and along with that, I, I'm sticking with the theme of doing collections for the community, we are going to be collecting items for Easter baskets for, to benefit children at the Maritime Days Easter Extravaganza the following weekend at the, uh, the New Guy Community Center. So exciting time, get the community involved and donate those items, uh, so they can have some, I think they're calling them drawing baskets, uh, for the kids there, they'll, they'll get a ticket and be able to draw for some of these baskets that we can put together. So bring your, your shred items to, to get rid of, spring cleaning, it's, tax time's just around the corner with that, a few days after, get rid of those old taxes, bring them in, shred them, and get rid of that stuff. That's all I have.
So you're in the front of the room?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaisonary Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
I don't have much for the planning commission, but, uh, I did go to a, uh, gas explosion, um, seminar, was it Thursday night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday night, yeah, okay, and, uh, two of our, uh, from the fire department were there, sat the table with them, and we, uh, had a little dinner, and then the program, and, and, uh, it's good, it's good to know what you have to do in a explosive assembly, in other words, stay away from it.
Right.
So, uh, otherwise, uh, hope, hope the snow is gonna let up on us, but, uh, everybody have a good, uh, good, good day, so.
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Wright?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Wright?
I have nothing either.
Me neither.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Two meetings to do.
Five minutes doesn't carry over, remember?
You guys banking time, or what are you doing?
And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?